Okay, all right.
All right.
We ready? All right. Call to order the December 4th meeting, 2018, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. All right, so, tonight, we have three discussion items. All of these discussion items are potential, potential, town meeting zoning bylaw amendments for the May 2019 amendment, town meeting. So, a couple of words about how we're going to proceed tonight and about all of these items on the agenda. All three items on the agenda are brought to us by the various proponents listed on the agenda, okay? So, none of these are planning board initiated items. They've all been brought to us for our review and potentially our discussion, our amendment change, and potentially our sponsorship, okay? Any of these, if they are to go before town meeting, can go there in one of two ways. They could be sponsored favorably by the planning board and become a planning board article, or if the planning board doesn't sponsor the article, doesn't vote favorably upon it, potentially it can go via a citizen petition, okay? So, there are multiple ways for any of these items to potentially get to town meeting. They would all, to be enacted, have to go before town meeting, so, just so everyone knows about that. We will go through them individually. I will have the proponent come up, tell us about the project. I'll ask Gene to kind of give us some input about information that the town has been able to gather, things that are question marks that we want to discuss. Members of the board will have opportunity to ask some questions, but really, we're mostly here tonight to listen. We're not going to vote on any of these items tonight, okay? We're mostly here to listen to the proponents, listen to people who want to speak out, either favorably or unfavorably, about the items, and then we will definitely be coming back at a next meeting or multiple meetings to have further discussions, okay? Each of these is really about one single property, but also is asking for a zoning change that may or may not affect that property or multiple properties, so we're going to be considering all of that. The specific project that's being imagined and proposed, but also how any zoning changes would affect that property, other properties, the town in general. So, that's all kind of open for discussion. Anyone who wants to speak, we'll ask you, you can just come up or raise your hand, come up to the podium, give your name and your address. Feel free to speak about the project that we're discussing. Just some general rules. It should not be personal, really, in any ways. Talk about yourselves, talk about what you know of the project, of the area, and what you want to say, but anything that is personal, we really don't want to, that's not really what we're here to consider. But, anything that you know about this area or about what you think, we're happy to listen. We have received various emails, and we appreciate that, and have reviewed, and we'll consider all of that as we go forward, okay? So, with that introduction, we'll start with Bowden Capital Group, Alex Loth. Potential for zoning map amendment, article for zoning district change from Corridor Development District 2, CDD 2, to General Business, GB, for the following parcels of land located at the corner of Hillside Road and Turnpike Street. 190 Hillside Road, 182 Hillside Road, and 582 Turnpike Street, located at the corner of Hillside Road and Turnpike Street.
Yes?
Sure.
So, you're right, all of these have come to my attention over the last month or so. I've had some discussions about what's being presented tonight and tried to include as much information as we can at this time. It seems far away for town meeting, but it's not. It is actually fast approaching, and I would just add that if any of these were to proceed to a warrant article, there's a full public hearing process with the planning board, so that would then go to public hearing, butters would be notified, where tonight, a lot of your notification was word of mouth, and some people have been following the planning board agenda, knowing this, but should you be 300-foot a butter to the, to any property line, you would be notified should this proceed to a town meeting warrant article. What you have in front of you is only the items that have come in since some cutoff point this morning. I forget if it was around 10:00 or 11:00, but a lot of information I received just over the weekend and up until 10:00 this morning. At that point, I made a cutoff, so I brought hard copies for you, but they've all been put in the packet, they were all online, and I know, I've heard from a lot of people that they followed that all day. So, there's two public packets over there, if anybody wants to look at hard copy information, but other than that, everything in our agendas gets linked and posted. We try for Thursday afternoon, but requirement is by Friday at 4:00. So, you can follow us online.
Okay. Fantastic.
And, so, I have brought up one plan and just a housekeeping note on this agenda item. 182 Hillside Road is actually owned by a resident, John Zarico, and his wife, I believe, Leslie is her name. I have included today the deed to his property and a plan of land which actually has an access easement and a utility easement that runs behind the other two properties which are owned by Bowden Capital. So, Mr. Zarico is here, he may choose to speak later, but he is Lot 3 on this plan, and just as a point of reference, there have been some discussions between the developer and Mr. Zarico, but the land agreement has not been made at this time.
So, which, which, in this...
Lot 3.
Right, is, is not owned by the current proponent?
Not at this point. So, Lot 1 and Lot 2, you can see to the rear of those properties...
Yep.
There's a, the deed is attached as well, but there's an access easement as well as a utility easement that runs to the rear.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And, these two conceptual plans that we're going to talk about now, again, were received about four, so you have hard copies, but I will bring them up electric. Do you want to do the two lot or the three lot first?
Why don't we look at all three lots together? It makes sense. Thanks. Alex Loth, I live at 76 Industry Street, and I work with Bowden Capital and Minco Corporation, and we've been working on this land for some period of time, along with the town. I've had some various discussions. We, I'll back up, I'll give you just a short amount of history. 190 Hillside was purchased back in 2012, and 582 Turnpike Street in 2013, so we've had these properties for some time and been hoping that there was some relief or some changing, perhaps, in zoning, as we understood that, going back in time, the intent of the CDD 2 district was that there be some, in my understanding of that district, was that there be some commercial development along Route 114, particularly in this area. In the spirit of the CDT 2 district, we are attempting to put together a parcel that can come close to meeting the guidelines of that district. To that end, we've worked with and spoken with the owner of the property at 182 Turnpike Street, and we are hopeful we can reach an agreement there and put the whole parcel together, but that's why I'm coming to you right now with, in your packets, there are two different solutions, because we can move forward with 190 Hillside and 582 Turnpike with what we feel is a great commercial development that will be great for the town. We can also put something together, which is what we've discussed over a longer length of time with the town, including Mr. Zarico's property at 182 Hillside as well, which was the, can you, is it possible to go back to the 1, 2, and 3 lots again?
Okay, and where exactly is this, on Turnpike Street, what's around there?
Absolutely. So, if you come down Chestnut Street to Hillside, you come out to Turnpike Street, Route 114. On this plan you're looking at, in the upper left-hand corner, is the location, it's not shown on this plan, is the location of the plaza that includes Starbucks and Fuddruckers. If you keep going to the left or the northwest in this plan, you get to Royal Crest and eventually to Merrimack College.
So, I'm going to just, anytime you're ready, I think, to put perspective.
Yeah.
If you can kind of look at the, the area in general, so, starting to the top of the screen, the B2 lot is Rite Aid. The very top of the screen is Rural Crest, so Rural Crest is cut off.
B2 in pink?
B2 in pink.
Is Rite Aid.
Is Rite Aid. Across from that is the Crossroads Plaza, as well as adjoining with that, there's a fitness center, Salem 5 Bank, I believe, and I'm not sure what's in the commercial building anymore.
And that's GB?
And that's General Business.
Yeah.
The B4 is Chestnut Green, which is primarily doctor's offices. R3 is one residential kind of house on an island there. It's occupied, it's been there forever. And then, we start to move in the CDD 1 and CDD 2 zoning districts, and as Alex mentioned, the intent of that was to provide, you know, transitional corridor of commercial that mixes in well with residential and helps to, I guess, not negatively impact the residential area. A lot of thought was put into that. I will say that the three highlighted lots, the one in green and two in yellow, are the ones we are referring to today. The second one in yellow is the 182, Mr. Zarico's property, and the easement runs behind the other two, so they are literally right on the corner. Then, there's a medical office building that was purchased, I believe, just last year, and he intends to rehab this building. You should be seeing him somewhat soon, actually. So, it's a fairly significant lot there, but it's a use that he mean, he's going to maintain, medical office. After that, there's a, you know, just a sliver of land that has sheds on it, mostly in outdoor use. That's only a 13,000-square-foot lot. The one behind it has a paving business, and again, neither, neither of these came to planning for review, however. If you were to drive down there, you'd see a lot of paving-type trucks. That's 19,000 square feet. Then, you have a paper street, a commercial business in a residential house, and another paper street. So, it would be somewhat challenging to combine that lot, it's an acre and a half, has wetlands on it, and then, after the paper street is McGregor Fence Company, who actually owns three or four lots, all comprised together, from memory, is just over seven acres, I believe, but only about 1.5 acres of upland. So, he's periodically come for zoning relief and had uses changed to kind of suit his area. So, as Alex said, the three of these combined brings it to about 76,000 square feet, the requirement is 87, and at that point, he kind of gets landlocked to, to add one more lot, because that medical building, I, it was purchased by somebody for a significant amount of money, he's been to us, he plans to rehab it, and then, those other lots are 3, 13,000 and 19,000, I mean, you're not going to get to 87 on that side by combining lots, which I think was the intent of this zoning. They're narrow, long, the idea was combine them and do something suitable to the residential area.
And there are residences behind that?
Yeah, so that's all our three land behind, primarily it's Industry, and then, there's, you know, just subdivisions, Boots Street, Wellesley Street, Seville Street are all behind it, and they don't come out onto 114 as Industry, I'm sorry, Hillside Road does. So, that puts a little context to the area. General Business is, I would say, the most intense business use, so we start with B1, B2, B3, B4, and we get to General Businesses. And so, we can, you know, dig deeper into this, but as perspective, the uses that the developer is proposing are allowed in General Business, they're allowed in B2. In the CDD 2, unfortunately, they're challenged with a bank with a drive-through was, a zoning change went into effect a few years ago for the McGregor Fence property. It has to be at least five acres, comprised of at least five acres, and no closer than 400 feet from the nearest residential building, and so, that...
Why don't we hear, why don't we hear, Gene, because why don't you tell us what's in the three? I think that's a great setup for what's, now we know where this is and what's around it, what are you looking to do? Great, can you, would you mind bringing up?
The three?
Yes, please. So, we, as a little bit more perspective, the company I work with, Minco, and this subsidiary, Bowden Capital, we've done some commercial developments in town, the Stop &amp; Shop, and more importantly, the Lowell 5 Bank that's on Chickering Road, and so, we've approached a variety of different tenants, and we've thrown some different concepts around, but what we've settled on is most appropriate for this, and perhaps somewhat least injurious to the neighborhood around it, is what you see in front of you there, where we propose to take the site, the three parcels, and put two users on the site, one being a bank, a branch bank, and the other being a donut shop, coffee shop, and we've had conversations with some local coffee shops who are very interested in this location. So, that's what we've put together here. We think that the, the visibility of the location is fantastic, the location near Merrimack College, it's already a busy commercial area, so we've, it fits well on the site, uses the site well. So, that's what we've put together on the site, we think it's a great use here, and that's what you see there, is a branch bank with drive-through and a cafe or donut shop, coffee shop with drive-through as well.
Are the drive-throughs exit, would they both exit onto Turnpike, or would they exit onto Hillside, or both?
We're not 100% sure right now. The intent is that we've, they, they're, obviously, it's one way through the drive-through itself. The question is to whether we'd be able to have in and out traffic on Turnpike Street, something we'd have to figure out as we go a little further into the design development, look at some traffic studies, but definitely, it's an asset to the site to have the access from both Turnpike Street and Hillside.
So, the traffic on Hillside backs up quite a bit during certain times of the day. Have you taken that into consideration?
Yeah, we have. I, I live there, so I see that, and for 20 minutes or half hour, whatever it is, in the mornings, it definitely does back up there. I don't think the use here would necessarily compound that too much, but again, you're right, we have to do some traffic studies and make sure that, you know, there's anything we need to do to try to mitigate, mitigate that. We've also been approached by the, well, I've heard of and been approached by the state in terms of the work that they're proposing out there. Unfortunately, I think their timeline, I, nobody knows for certain what they're going to do. I know there's a hearing coming up as well, so there may be some changes to the state road as well that may help with that, but unfortunately, their timeline is, is pretty long on that.
Yeah.
In the yellow, you've got marked existing buildings, those are residential structures?
That's correct. You're looking at the two houses and a garage on Industry Street in that particular plan. That's right.
Both here now?
On the site now, 190 Hillside is a residence, a single-family residence, and 582 Turnpike Street is also a single-family residence, and then, there's a small barn that goes with that property as well.
Okay. And are either those occupied, or are they just...
They're both occupied.
Okay.
Yep. And then, 182 Turnpike Street is also a single-family residence that's occupied.
Okay.
So, we intend to comply with the setbacks as necessary in the general business zone from the residential areas you'll see, we'll, depending on, so, have the distances we need from the back and from the side.
So, I, I don't need an answer to this tonight, but something to consider is, as Gene mentioned, general businesses are large as most uses, most, any, would you be able to do this within a B2, which is a little bit more restrictive and might be a little bit more palatable to the board or members of the community?
We're open to whatever works to be able to get this project done. We came to the town saying, the way CDD 2 is written, it, we're close, but it doesn't work for a variety of reasons. What do you think? And this was the option that came up, was that general business was a good way to do it, and my understanding of, and maybe Gene wants to speak to this as well, but my understanding, one of the reasons GB was picked is that there's some continuity to bringing the same district as opposed to throwing a one zone in, in a spot there, that you're bringing the general business continuing it, excuse me, to the east down Turnpike Street. But to answer your question directly, if the zone allows us to do this plan, then we would certainly be open to it. I honestly, I haven't looked to see whether we have any issue with drive-throughs or setbacks with B2 as opposed to GB.
So, we can, something we can look at, okay?
Yep.
I'll add that in the general business zone, the setback from the residential is actually greater than the CDD 2 requires, because when the general business, if that's a residential zone, they actually have to add 15 feet to the rear setback. So, that spacing is better, however, from 114 to the buildings, there's a 100-foot setback requirement on 114. CDD 2's, it doesn't require it, because those lots are so narrow, so they're excluded from that 100-foot setback, but general business on 114 does require a 100-foot setback from 114. And I think this is probably, maybe a little shy, maybe some tweaking can get there. The Crossroads Plaza, rough measurement is only about 70 to 75 feet from it, but that was a pre-existing non-conforming building at the time, so it was Kent movers, and they used the foundation, and so, they went for different special permits, but they didn't have to comply with that 100-foot setback.
To follow up on what Gene said, the 100-foot would be difficult to comply with here, and I'm glad she confirmed that, because I had read somewhere else, I was confused as to whether that did apply here. So, the 100-foot is tough, we can tweak the plan to comply with the 50 from the back, but 100 off the front is both difficult, and I think not what CDD 2 intended either, was to push the buildings that far from the street. So, if we do go, that's a good, I'm sorry, if we do go GB, then it does appear that we may need some relief from the zoning board.
I guess what I'm wondering is, what exactly is the issue with the CDD 2, like, what about that doesn't work? Is it the setback? Is it the acreage? What are the problems you're running into?
It's several things. In CDD 2, you need two acres to do anything commercially, and we have 1.7 something. And in order to have a drive-through, you need five acres, and then, there's also the Gene mentioned, if you have a drive-through, you then need 400 feet, so basically, three things that don't work. If it were one, maybe we'd be coming to you and just saying, what's the best way to try to get relief from 1.75 acres to two, but with all of those things? And I think, I know we're open to a mechanism that makes it work, so, we're sort of here for ideas.
So, the, initially, on the face of it, it was like, why is it two? Because you can't really comprise two by combining any of these lots, right? But then, when you dig deeper into the uses and the restrictions that are on specifically these two types of uses, we'd be challenged with a zoning bylaw amendment rather than a district amendment that changes those uses, and then, they become available on these other smaller lots.
I don't recall, is there waivers or anything like that through CDD 2? I don't recall, I don't think so.
I don't think so. I think more, maybe, design guideline-type waivers, but not...
So, I mean, it seems to me like the question one is whether we think this is kind of a, conceptually, a good idea for this location, and if so, then what's the best way to kind of make it happen in the area? So, okay, I mean, and that's something that I think we can definitely think about and talk about.
Ask the O.T. permitting for curbs as well.
Okay. So, I'd say, at this point, I'll see if there are members of the public that want to say anything, or ask any questions, or have any comments.
Actually, before we do that, can I, can you explain the difference between the three lot and the two lot, and what the different plans are?
Oh, absolutely. Thanks for bringing that up. So, on the two lot, we're down to, I don't have that figure in front of me exactly, it's closer to an acre and a quarter, I believe, which would work great for a bank, one user rather than two. So, I have a plan, you can take a look at it. It's, basically takes that blue box there, the bank, and puts it onto one site, so it becomes one user instead of two. I think, for our purposes as a developer, I think it works great. I think the downside from a planning perspective, maybe, is that you might end up isolating that other lot there, only because, no matter how you, I don't want to get too far ahead of myself, but you could end up with another isolated lot, like the, what's the, the power washing place next to the, next to the plaza to the north of us. So, that's the, that's what we propose for the two lots that we currently control, is a development that has a branch bank there with the drive-through, associated parking, entrances and exits, and we think that's great as well. So, our preference is to continue to work with, with the neighbor and hopefully reach an agreement that works, so we can put all three lots together, because I like that development better, and I think it's a better, from a planning perspective as well, for the town, but if that, for some reason, that doesn't end up working out, then this worked well for us, and I understand it's a little bit of ambiguity for the board to try to, to work through, but it's where we are right now.
Okay. Great, thank you, Gene.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment? Come on up.
Good evening. John Zarico, my wife and I, Leslie and I own the 182 lot that Alex spoke about, so I'm, I'm here to learn about the process that would happen to move the project forward and comment on the two different proposals they have. So, one of the questions I would have is about the process. So, you said, this is a hearing to just bring ideas out and have people comment. What is the process? You said it's town meeting, but if they have to have a zoning change as opposed to a variance, I guess I don't understand those differences, and if they need a zoning change, does it have to go to the zoning board first before it goes to town meeting? Or what is the exact process, and how would, in effect, you know, planning board, zoning board, and town meeting?
Sure. So, a zoning change would, would either come through the proposal or through, through here, there'll be a public hearing at the planning board, and where people could comment, and planning board would take a vote on it, either favorably or unfavorable. It goes to town meeting, and at town meeting, there's generally a two-thirds vote required to pass any zoning, to pass a zoning change.
So, it goes from planning board to zoning board?
Nope. Zoning board is, zoning board is for variances.
Okay. So, so if they stay with the CCD 2 without, without getting a zoning based on whatever plan they, that is recommended or agreed to, they need a variance for CCD 2, so to speak, for the drive-through, et cetera? That has to go to the zoning board?
So, we don't have use variances, so those are permitted uses, and we don't have a use variant, so I'm not sure you can get a variance to the 400-feet setback, because that, that's detailed in the use.
Okay. Okay, so I don't know the answer to this.
Any variance request would have to go to the zoning board. I think what Gene's saying is not clear that that would be suitable relief to allow this project.
So, really, it sounds like zoning is their only path forward, not a relief of the CCD 2, but there was all kinds of restrictions he mentioned, right, on the CCD 2?
Right. So, it, it's not clear to me whether or not that would work or not, but what's being put here is a zoning change, and that's what's being suggested, so I'm...
Okay.
I'm under the assumption that if variances were available, that might be the first way that they would go about it, because that's easier sometimes than a zoning change.
Okay.
Doesn't require town meeting and all that, so I'm guessing that they've done their research, and they think this is the best way to try to...
Okay, so, yeah, it's not clear to me exactly how the process works. So, I would comment on what we're looking at here as a, the two-lot proposal, which I'm, I'm in favor of being included in the proposal on the three lots, and we've worked a bit towards that, but we've got a ways to go. I would comment on this particular two lot as, being resident there for well over 20 years, that's a busy area, as we all know, at certain times of the day, and to allow a curb cut like that showing close to that intersection, to me, would seem to be a potential safety problem. I'm not sure what the curb cut is for the general business development with the Fuddruckers, but I would imagine that one would be about 90 feet, somewhere in that area, around 100 feet, based on their frontage there, and that would be, seemed to me to be a big concern with this particular proposal here. So, I would, I would like that to be noted, but like I said, we're in favor of working with the planning board and with the developer if we can reach an agreement. One of my questions would be, if we were not able to reach an agreement with the developer, would our lot stay at CCD 2, or would that go, would the zoning affect, would it go to general business for our lot also? Would that impact our ability to live there or sell that as a residence, or, you know, how would that impact us if, if we did not reach an agreement?
So, that's a really good question. I can't say that we have an answer for that right now. I would say that generally, it would be unlikely that we would change a residential...
Well, we're in the CCD 2.
It would be very, well, it would be very rare for us to change someone who's not a proponent's zoning, just to make something else work. It's possible if we were looking at the area as a whole and making changes as a whole, but my guess is if they did, they're just the two lot thing, that we would really just focus on that and leave yours out of it, but I don't know, that's, it's a good question, and we'll think about that as the process goes on.
Right, so I'm here to learn, that's why I have questions about the process, questions about how it would impact me if we don't reach an agreement.
Right.
Because it's potentially, we may not reach an agreement, but I would like to see an agreement reached, and hopefully, we can work to that as, I think that would be a good thing for the town. I was a proponent of changing the CCD 2 prior to the zoning change in our area, I was one of the proponents at planning board, so this is only my second time ever at planning board, to have our lots...
I miss you every other week.
To have our lots included when they were going to zone the other side of the street. I, I rallied my neighbors to be included with the hopes that this might one day happen, be a good thing for the town and a good thing for us there, so, all right. Thank you for your time, and Alex...
Thank you, Mr. Zarico. No, you're good. Anyone else? Yeah, whoever wants to come up, just...
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Bill DiAtamo. I live at 15 Greenwood East Lane, which is just up off Chestnut Street, so I'm extraordinarily familiar with this area. I've been driving through it for most of my life, but certainly for 20-plus years, and unfortunately, I did not have a chance to see these plans before the meeting tonight. I expected that there was something sort of like this, but I haven't really had a chance to dig in, and I do have some questions, I understand there's going to be some follow-up meetings, but in terms of, one of my initial concerns is that even if there is a change in the zoning, that it sounds like there's still going to need to be some tweaks, as I think you said, to make whatever it is work because of setbacks and so on and so forth. So, zoning is not panacea here, it's not going to clean this problem up.
I will say they're conceptual plans, and so, if the developer, if, if that's 90-feet setback and the requirement is 100, could he make the building smaller, or could he angle it different? I don't know, but that would be on them to try to avoid variances. I think anybody would try to avoid them if they could.
Understood. That's all I'm asking is, yeah, and again, I know these are preliminary, they're conceptual plans, and, you know, nobody's really had a chance to dig in on them yet, but that's...
There's a zoning table up in the corner, and so, they've, to the best of their ability, detailed what they think the zoning requirements are and which ones they could meet.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll have a chance to take a look at it before, certainly, the next meeting, I assume.
Is it possible that they could require variances to do whatever ultimate project if, if, if there was a zoning change? You're right, it doesn't necessarily mean that whatever project is proposed can automatically happen, it may need variances, I, I don't know. And I think, I agree with Gene, that when you're asking for a zoning change, you do your damnedest to not have to request variances.
Well, that's, and that's sort of leads into my next point, which is that, again, as somebody who's spent a lot of time in this area, I would certainly agree that what's there now is probably not the best use. That said, I am extraordinarily concerned about the traffic problem, it's already been mentioned, there are huge backups on Hillside, not always, but frequently, there are huge backups on, on Hillside almost every day, and that intersection is tricky, under the best of circumstances, and I guess my primary concern, just looking at this, I guess it's twofold. One is, that if you're talking about a cafe, I assume you're talking about some sort of coffee shop, you're talking about a drive-through, at times that's going to get hit primarily is in the morning. Exiting onto Hillside in that area, when you have, it looks like that entrance, or excuse me, that exit off of Hillside, is going to be almost diametrically opposite of where the entrance is to that Starbucks and that plaza there, that is already a traffic difficulty. And I am assuming that this board, I'm assuming that Minco will, of course, have some sort of traffic study done, but I'm assuming that the board is probably going to want to dig in deep on that, especially considering that, as again, was mentioned by Mr. Loth, that we know that DOT is start, going to start doing some work from Willow Street all the way down to Waverly. But, so, traffic there is a big deal, I guess the next question is whether or not that bank property, in terms of zoning, is necessary, or additive, and I'm sure they want to use the property they, as they can, to the best use possible. However, it may be that using all three lots for one building would meet the conditions of zoning, may even meet the conditions of CCD two, I'm not sure, and I think that's something that probably needs to be addressed, is whether or not we're going through this exercise in order that Minco can squeeze an extra building in there, and I would note that squeezing in a bank, where there is an empty bank less than 200 yards away, I think the old Salem Five is moved, where you were identifying where that fitness club was, and I, banks get bought and sold, I don't even know who it was, it was Georgetown, it was Salem Five, whatever, but there was a bank there that's now gone, that's now in that, that other plaza, the Starbucks Plaza, so whether or not there's actually a bank need there, may be a question.
So, from my understanding, is that it's not the building size, it's the lot size, and that based on, if you even put all three lots together, they still don't have the 87,000 square feet that CCD two requires, so the building sizes are not relevant to that particular question, it's the size of the lots and stuff.
And that may be more of a zoning issue than a planning issue, I mean, yeah, I mean, if, but if you.
Setbacks and stuff like that, yeah.
Correct, and I mean, if you fix the, all I'm suggesting is that there may be more flexibility in terms of planning and making traffic and things like that work, if there's one building as opposed to two. And again, I haven't had a chance to dig in on setbacks.
Can I ask you a question? When, when is the traffic backup mostly on Hillside?
Seven thirty to eight fifteen is probably the worst, in my experience, and that's, I say that, that's the time I'm generally through there. I'm sorry?
Much longer.
Maybe much longer, I'm, lots of other people are going to talk, that's my experience.
Okay, all right.
I don't want to speak about something I don't know about, I know it's bad at that time.
Okay.
I also know that it's bad at night, trying to get back in from that, that, you know, that's a, that's a tricky intersection every single night, and I don't know how this would affect it, but I'm guessing it's not going to help. Don't want to draw too many conclusions yet, but that's the case. I had one more point, and I say, I think I sort of lost it, I'll let other people speak, I would just.
If it comes back to you, feel free to jump back up, okay?
Okay, very good, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Hi, my name's Mary Lou Schalman, I live at 85 Hillside Road, that's 10 houses up the road, and the traffic is probably two hours, two and a half hours, at least, on either end of the road, and it's often backed up past my house and into the blind curve. And, there are school buses that come around that corner, and I'd hate to see them have to encounter that exit, and here's a little piece of history, I haven't been to a planning board meeting in a while, I don't recognize any of the faces, but it's interesting what is not shown here, because when they were doing the development on the opposite side of the street, all the neighbors were very concerned about the curb cut onto Hillside Road, and I'm not sure exactly what the right word was, but there were assurances, and there was a gate put up on that back entrance into that development, saying it would only be emergency exit and for emergency vehicles, and that it would not become a cut-through, because the neighbors were concerned about how much traffic volume. Now, ways and other social media directions have exacerbated the issue, and so, being opposite that driveway is a real problem, it's a real safety issue, from my perspective, and I suspect the driveway that goes into the back of the development on the opposite corner.
Oh, on the other side.
Yep, and I think it's probably right, directly across from that, as shown. So, I would strongly urge you to look at the history, and whatever documents you have, and see what the assurances and issues were at the time, and also to really question whether there should be any exit there, or where it should be, and I can't imagine that closer to the corner would be safe. But in addition to that, I basically have a question, and that is, what is going to happen here? And whatever you know about the state work and plans would be helpful, because if they're going to take land that now pushes all that traffic there, then you have a completely different equation, and so I'd like you to consider that, and take that seriously into consideration when you approve or don't approve this project.
Okay, great. Gene, will there be, I guess, I did see that there's a meeting next week with Mass DOT, is there a, I mean, I don't know if they'll be handing things out, but if any summary or conceptual ideas, because whatever's going to happen on 114 that the state does, we can put input, but that's oftentimes, there are limits to, to what they'll listen to, and that'll have to, that may take priority over whatever we say here.
Anyone didn't see it, it went out on town news, I believe, yesterday, well, I guess last night, at about eight o'clock, there's a meeting being held at the Stevens Estate, by the state, to give information, I think somebody referenced from Willow Street intersection all the way to Waverly Road, they're, they're looking at a 114 improvement project, one intersection of which is this one, and so, I'll be attending that meeting, I'll get whatever information I can, but it's open to the, it's a public meeting being held by Mass DOT, so.
Hi, I'm back, sorry, I promised I will be quick and I will be done. My other question, the one I forgot earlier, was, to the extent we have guarantees that this is the development that will go forward, as opposed to, for example, the thing that can, one of the first things that concerned me was, as a general business, you open up a lot of different uses, including, for example, a gas station, and that's something that would concern me even more greatly than what is being proposed here, that said.
Okay, anyone else on that one? All right, thank you, so we will discuss that item, I believe, at the next meeting, we'll discuss that again.
Carry it on the agenda.
Carry it on the, again, as a discussion item at the next meeting, specifically, I would like to hear more about any progress between the developer and Mrs. Zarico, in terms of which project we're considering, whether it's three parts, three lots or two lots, and then some information from Mass DOT, whatever we can get about what they're thinking about there would be helpful. Oh, and maybe next time we can dig into the GB versus B2, as to what might be appropriate, should we want to consider this, for the discussion of that proposal, okay? Great, all right, next one, Village Center Properties LLC, Chris McCarthy and Stephanie Messina Seawade, I'm going to guess, Seawade, you can, is that, all right. Potential for a zoning map amendment article for zoning district change from residential three, R3, to general business, everybody wants general business, for the following parcels of land located at the corner of Massachusetts Avenue and Chickering Road, 615 Massachusetts Avenue and 287 Chickering Road, also another state project. All right, hi.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and present, my name's Chris McCarthy, representing Village Center Properties, and as you mentioned, both Stephanie and Vernon, the property owners in question, are with me present tonight. So, just a little bit of background, I've been working with a bank that's very eager to come to North Andover, a great regional bank, a great asset, I've worked with them for a number of years, and they've been looking at locations throughout North Andover, and really were drawn to this intersection of Mass Ave and Chickering Road, tied in with the fact that Mass DOT is proposing some massive changes to that intersection, we thought the time was right, we've been able to work and strike an agreement with the property owners, and we're seeking a rezoning to see if we can accommodate this business opportunity. By way of background, I wanted to first thank Gene for suggesting that we come in here and do a very preliminary introduction to us, and she gave detail on the, the rezoning mechanisms, and the, and the quick timetable that's approaching for town meeting this year. We've been working proactively with Mass DOT, with traffic engineers, environmental engineers, my apologies, the one thing we haven't done yet is to really have discussions with the nearby butters, to relieve any concerns, and kind of just proactively address any issues that they might have, but that is our intention. I can't today disclose the name of the, the bank, but I'm sure by the next meeting I will be able to, they're very excited to kind of come in and introduce themselves, I should say. So, so if, if we could perhaps, Gene, I don't know if it's possible, just to pull up the conceptual plan and.
Before we do that, in the same way we did last time, Gene, could you tell us where this is, what's around it, and what's, what abuts it, and a little bit just about the state project that's going on there, or going to be going on there as well?
So, this, similarly, is just the zoning map itself zoomed in, you can see the property in the green highlight and yellow highlight are the two residential properties, this is residential three zoning, one faces Mass Ave and one faces Chickering Road.
These are right at the corner of Mass and Chickering Road.
Right at the corner, directly across from the First Cavalry Church.
Diagonal?
Diagonally across, yep. And surrounding these two postles is actually open space, I'm going to bring up one other diagram after, but there's an open space parcel to the rear, and to the, looking at the yellow highlight to the right of that, and those open space postles are associated with the cobblestone crossing residential subdivision, it's a PRD, so it has open space land. Then it's actually the 99 Restaurant, that is still zoned residential three, that's been a restaurant for decades, and pre-existed, I'm assuming, and never has been rezoned. And then it's Bulges and Veterinary Hospital, where the GB is located, so on that stretch of land, if this was to proceed with general business, I would advocate to get 99 included in a general business zone, and then discuss that open space parcel that also fronts on Chickering Road. Across from it is Heritage Green and Kittredge, I'm not sure if it's called Kittredge Crossing, is a 40B complex that's labeled as the B1 lot, so that is also residential. To put that in perspective a little bit more, I asked Chris to kind of better show that zoning here, where the bank, I'm going to bring up the conceptual plan for the bank, but that's a smaller version of it. The open space to the back is green space separating the PRD from the commercial business, there's an open space parcel to the right of this development, the 99, and then Bulges Veterinary Hospital is darker shade, and that's general business. After that is really trustees of reservation, reservation land, they have a few postles on this stretch, there are two residences that share a common driveway, from what I can see, and then we get to general business again, when you get to Richdale and across the street with Harrison's, so from there, there's a lot of open space for the trustees.
So, it seems to me, this is a similar one to the last one, where we're considering two things, we're considering whether this specific project is something that we're in favor of, or not opposed to, and then if so, what's the best way to make that happen? Because I, especially with, with this one, I share the concern raised by, by gentlemen before, of general business could be a lot of things, maybe a bank might be appropriate there, but I really wouldn't want a gas station there. So, we'll talk about the bank and stuff like that, and if we get to the zoning, which we probably won't get to tonight, but probably, maybe at a next meeting, we'd have to consider if we do like the project ways, what zoning, if any, would be appropriate, and what limitations putting on there.
And in each case, I did have conversations with the proponents, and thinking of the master plan, and how many different zoning districts we have, and when you look up at the other end of Osgood Street, where, you know, there's a gas station, there's Dunkin' Donuts, there's the strip malls with the Red Barn at the end, Mad Maggie's, the Dunkin' Donuts, it's just all different zoning, and it, it goes on for quite a stretch. So, at a high level, we just decided, okay, Bulges is general business, and 99 technically is general business, it was really just stay in sync, but B2 definitely allows for the shoes, and again, we can get into exactly what the right business district is appropriate, but in general, we're going, in both cases, from residential use to a business use in the focus.
But there are also a couple of banks, just further down the street from here, aren't there two other banks, one fairly new?
There are.
Yeah, it just seems, I'm just thinking of master plan and business, it just, that's a lot of banks to be, you know, and then further down, there's even.
And I was thinking the same thing, but I mean, I guess, I'm frankly shocked that we can support so many banks, because I never go to the bank.
North Andover's a very desirable town.
Well, it, and it just seems with all the mobile banking and everything you can do online, and I know, I was talking with a teller the other day, that now it's more about customer service and lending and, and things like that, it's not about depositing your checks, but it, it does surprise me, and I guess, and they come, they come and go, but it just does surprise me about the real estate and banks, but if there's a market for it, that, there's a market for it.
There's a very strong market, and for some reason, banks like to be near each other, just like, yes, like pharmacies, so the, the common area is attractive. This location right now, as Gene mentioned, there's two homes on it, so, so the Pink House, better known right at the intersection, Stephanie and her husband live in, in a smaller home right near it, at 287 Chickering. The idea here is combined, we're over .9 acres of land, we use general business, again, just because of the setbacks and everything else, we wanted to make sure something that fit, and again, something that we could have continuity on this portion of Chickering Road. One of the things we first did is, we took a look at the proposed Mass DOT plan, and I don't know if you have copies of this in front of you, if not, I brought extra copies, but it's a significant change to this intersection, as far as just the scope of work that Mass DOT is proposing, it really does impact the residential quality of life, if you will, there's right-of-way taking, there'll be a dedicated right-hand lane going off of Chickering onto Mass Ave, going towards the town common, there will be adding a bike lane and other sidewalks, so there will be encroachment onto the residential portion of the land, oh, there it goes. So, so it does change the dynamics of that intersection pretty significantly. Again, we think that it really suits a business use, a commercial use, with the visibility and everything else, as it really does detract from the residential component. We have looked, the bank in question, we've taken a look at the traffic numbers, this project would require a Mass State Highway access permit, we've worked with Mass DOT, as well as our own traffic engineer, subject to doing a full traffic analysis study, we're confident that, that that's obtainable, we have pretty good distances between the, the light, up along Chickering, but also at Mass Ave as well, so the distance is there. Also, the traffic count for this bank in question is very low, and it's throughout the day, Monday through Friday, nine to five, no evenings, really no weekends, there may be occasional Saturday morning hours, but that even hasn't been determined for this location, so it would be basically nine to five, no evenings, and sporadic traffic.
I'm curious, thinking about this, we've talked about this intersection a lot in the past, and people have said it's one of the most dangerous intersections in town, if not the state, and I'm mindful that if you just sort of broaden the perspective a little bit, all of a sudden, you are very close to the Atkinson School, the ABECC, the Middle School, and a whole cluster of schools, and that if you continue down Mass Ave just a short bit, you're at a crosswalk to a school, and so that concerns. And so that concerns me, adding additional traffic. It sounds like you've looked into that. But also from a traffic perspective, similar to what we talked about on the last project, it concerns me a little bit that there would be an entrance and an exit on Mass Ave because that section of Mass Ave between Chickering and the Common is just real residential. So adding in an entrance and an exit on that seems very, it doesn't seem in character with that part of town and where we are so fiercely protective of the Common and the character of that. And I suspect that's why 90% of the people are in the room. Talking about adding an entrance to a bank on that one stretch of road seems, it just doesn't seem like it fits in with the character there. Is this something that you've considered of only having the Chickering access?
We did look at Chickering Road and we actually even looked at ways to kind of mitigate traffic on Mass Ave. The traffic volumes is such that it flows, it kind of allows, you want to have a circular traffic pattern, you also need to allow so much parking. The Mass Ave does provide that outlet, so it is more attractive for the bank. Could we make it work without it potentially? But it does take away from the project and kind of the bank's desire to be at that location. We will, when we come back, we'll have more detailed traffic numbers for you. And I think that may relieve some concerns when you see kind of the volumes and the different times of days that those numbers are kind of generated. And we have different trip calc's based on right, left, et cetera. Most of the traffic will be coming out and going back on Chickering Road.
Okay. And then I guess the other question is, will you guys continue to put holiday lights up there? Because my kids always love that.
They're not working tonight. Please keep mine, like, all the lights aren't working.
They're beautiful.
I think the...
It's a lot of work.
Do you think the landscaping is important? Because it's always interesting to me that this area is, has a lot of traffic, but I always still remember the trees, just in, it's in front of the different condominium complexes. And so I like that I see that there's a lot there, but I think that is an important part of it. Okay?
The bank really wants this to be a showcase, so they've already hired a landscape architect. This will be a grade A project, as far as the visibility, the looks, and the landscaping.
Is this the bank of state or is it like a...
It is.
Oh, it is. Can you tell me if it's anywhere else around here?
It is in the region, yes. And again, hopefully next week, we can disclose the name and we'll have a representative here as well to answer questions.
Okay. So why don't we take any, if there is any comments or questions, why don't we take those now?
Susan Haltmeyer, 90 Herrick Road. I just want to second what you said about Mass Ave and protecting the Common. And it really is irrelevant how much traffic would come in and out of that driveway. The point to me is there would be a driveway and then there could be another driveway and another driveway. And I don't think we want to set a precedent of putting a driveway like that on Mass Ave, period. So that's my feeling of it. It doesn't matter if there's one car a day or 100 cars a day or no cars. The fact that the driveway existed for a commercial business on Mass Ave, then there's something across the street and then there's another one down the street. And so I just, I completely support what you said, that allowing any opening to commercial on that section of Mass Ave leading down to the Common is just a mistake.
Anyone else?
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, Stephanie, who's part of the project, Chris. I don't know if everyone's educated in here, but Mass Ave now is a commercial road. It's a state commercial road. I don't know if you know it, but the town has agreed that it is a commercial road with eight wheeler trucks that are going on it. That's why they're putting in the right-hand turn lane. I'm just being honest with you. I think that has something to do with it also. It's something that's going to happen even if we don't put the bank there, so to speak. The town has already given the blessing on the commercial road going to Mass Ave. So I mean, like Chris said, it's nine to five, but you're getting a lot more truck traffic that isn't to do with the bank, so to speak. And they're also, I don't know if anyone's aware of the actual traffic pattern, I don't know if Chris mentioned it, but they are, the state has put in a lane that goes directly to up Mass Ave. So that's already been approved by the state. So Mass Ave, when you get to that corner, is going to be a left, a right, and a direct lane going up Mass Ave, which is not going to, it's going to just put more cars on that road anyways. So that's just a thought process.
Good evening. Debbie Manning, 9 Cobblestone Circle. So our, my property is directly, and it's not really shown on here, directly off Mass Ave, it's the, if you're traveling Chickering Road, take a right onto Mass Ave and take the right into Cobblestone Circle. My home is the very first one on the right, so it's, that's where it abuts. So I just, I don't know what the process is here, but there's just a couple of things I wanted to just bring up, just for considerations. There's a, and I know that part of the Mass Ave project that is, one of the big things that they're looking at is drainage off of Mass Ave. There's a drainage area, there's a drainage issue out of our development and especially between my lot and the neighbor's lot into the seaways. And they, in order to get the water not to flow into their yard, they pile up all the leaf clippings and it just keeps it from flowing. I understand why it happens, but there is a drainage issue there. If a bank were to come in, that's my backyard, and I would just be concerned about lighting at night. And as far as I'm aware, the Seaweed's property is part of the planned residential development that Cobblestone Crossing was, it was part of one of the lots of Cobblestone Crossing. So I don't know how that fits in with our development. And I would just be cautious about all the vegetation or just having enough vegetation put in. So thank you.
One of the green highlight or the yellow, the Pink House? I'm not aware of that, but I will look at it.
Okay. So thank you for your points. Again, this is not something that we're going to take any votes on. I think we'll discuss it again at the next meeting and maybe kind of drill down a little bit again more into some of the traffic details, if, once we can get those. And then just talk maybe about the specific zoning changes requested, if that's appropriate, if others are appropriate, and the uses and things like that. Jean, if there was a zoning change to general business or B2 or something like that, would this type of project come back to us for any special permits or things like that? Or what would it come back?
Site plan review. Because they'd be constructing a structure over 2,000 worth of it.
Okay.
And so that will also entail traffic review, stormwater review. We'd have a peer review, actually look at the consultant, the developer's plans.
Right. So to answer your, kind of your questions about process, if, what I was asking is if there was a zoning change and this was changed to a business district of some sort, that in itself doesn't just allow the project to go forward. They would still have to come back to us for some type of special permit or site plan review. At that point, that's when we would get into things like drainage, lighting, things like that. We'll talk about all that stuff now in the sense, especially traffic and lighting, in the sense of, is this a good idea to have this type of project here? But the actual details of how that would be laid out and what mitigation, what kind of landscaping, all of that would have to come after zoning change was approved and after they came to us with a special permit application. So that's kind of the process. Okay. So we'll carry that one over to the next meeting as well, which is December 18th, is that right? Okay. All right. All right. So why don't, why don't we take a quick two-minute recess? So if anyone doesn't want to stay for this next one, they can go and then we can also fill in seats in the middle. All right? And so we'll take a two-minute recess and then we'll pick up with our last item. Okay? Great? All right. So we're going to pick up with our last agenda item. This is Tom Zarico, 1665 Grape Pond Road, potential amendment article to the large estates condominium conversion zoning bylaw. Again, some of you were here when we started, some of you were not. So just to review, we are not voting on anything today. Again, this is not a proposal brought forward by the planning board, it's one that is brought forward by Mr. Zarico. We did have some discussion about the property that this mainly affects, although this particular amendment affects more than one property. We did talk about the property where the printing museum is and then owned by the Historical Society. Again, I, we welcome all comments. I thank the people that have sent emails. They've been very, both informative and with advocacy, and I appreciate that. We've, they're all as part of the record. I know this is a very highly debated and, I wouldn't say sensitive, but people have strong feelings about this and we certainly appreciate that. But we want everyone to be civil and to the extent you can be succinct, that's great too. But please come forward, give us your opinions, any history that you have. But really, how you think this zoning proposal and the proposal for the particular property that has sparked the conversation for this zoning proposal, how that would affect your vision of the town, the Common, things like that? We do want to hear that and we are going to consider that and talk about that. No votes will be taken today. We recommend, I think there'll be potentially more questions than answers today because we're still at the beginning. And so we're mostly going to listen today to Mr. Zarico, to whoever wants to come up and talk. And we'll come back probably with some more questions for future hearings. Okay. So Mr. Zarico, why don't you come? Why don't you introduce the project? Again, I'll go to Jean to kind of give us a little bit of background and then we'll just proceed in the same manner with the other projects that we've done, listen to today.
Okay. Thanks. Tom Zarico, 1665 Grape Pond Road. I am here representing myself, my business. I'm not here speaking for the Historical Society. It's nice to be among so many friends and ex-friends, I guess. I hope that when we're done here, that everybody who was a friend is still a friend. It's important to me. And friends and family, too. We don't normally have family here, even if it is by default. I'm asking that the planning board support a town meeting warrant article to revise the zoning bylaw, Section 12, large estate condominium conversion, in a manner of their choosing and at their direction, which would allow the subsequent submission and consideration of a special permit application for the revitalization of 800 Mass Ave, also known as the Rogers Building or the Museum Building. This idea has evolved in recent months pursuant to extensive public and open discussion of alternate uses or dispositions of this building. Through those discussions, it was apparent that business and commercial activities of any kind were not desired either by the neighborhood residents or by the municipal planning authorities. Also through those discussions, it was made clear that the Historical Society, which owns the building, preferred to find a way for the building to be retained and revitalized. In fact, I was engaged in many or most of these discussions. And in the absence of any person or organization showing an interest or willingness to propose or commit to a plan to accomplish these sometimes competing priorities of preserving the building but having the least impact on the fully agreed and acknowledged issues of traffic, aesthetics including physical building and site changes, lighting, the character of the area, the responsibilities of the owners, and the needs of the community at large, I determined to propose this. What I consider to be a thoughtful balance of those various and frequently competing needs. So this forum, as you've said, I really think is just to get a sense of the board's appetite for a position regarding the potential for the zoning revisions that would accommodate an eventual permit application to support this project. And with that, I'll explain a little bit about the project because that's really where the, where the emotions and where the meat of this discussion is.
So you did discuss, so last year, the Historical Society came and had a discussion here at the planning board about the printing museum and about the building. We took a sidewalk of that. There's, the museum has obviously not been there for a few years, the building has no real tenants, there is a significant cash flow issue, and the building is deteriorating. That was all discussed at meetings last year. From that, we tried to talk about a zoning change, but really couldn't find something that we thought really fit perfectly. And we were coming up on town meeting and we decided instead of pushing something that we really didn't think was fully thought through or fully developed, to establish a working group for the Common and that historical district in that area. A working group involves some of the members of the planning board, neighbors, members of the Historical Society. And you, that group met multiple times, and I believe there are minutes available, is that correct? And this was one of the ideas that came out of that. I know there were other ideas that were discussed. And this is what, as I understand, the proposal you're about to get into is what has been proposed, at least by the board of the Historical Society. Is that...
It's been proposed by me to them.
To them, okay. All right. Perfect. And what we're talking about though also, which I think will, I do want to get into more of the project because I think that's what people want to talk about today. I think for the next discussion, I'd really like to delve into the idea of, that you're proposing of approaching this project by changing the greatest, the large estate condominium conversion zoning bylaw, rather than just changing the zoning at the proposed location. I think we should talk about the project tonight and then we'll get into that next time because I think it's an, it's an interesting idea. time, because I think it's an, it's an interesting idea, but it's different than what we've heard kinda in the past, so it's something that's developed, I guess.
I agree, and that, that was done, I think, out of respect for the concerns for, for zoning change, that no matter what you do, leaves, leaves more open end, open-ended questions for a longer term. This, this doesn't apply specifically or only necessarily to this, to this property, and it would be the subject of a special permit. That would be, you know, discretionary in all regards.
Okay. So why don't you talk about the project?
Okay. As everybody knows, the, the subject site is a 1.75 acre site, zoned R3, with two existing structures, the Historical Society headquarters, which is the white building on the corner, and the former museum, museum of printing, which is the Rogers Building. The idea initially is to divide the site into two separate R3 compliant lots, each with a single existing structure. The headquarters building and lot on the corner of Mass Ave and Academy Road to remain essentially unchanged, and the Rogers Building at 800 Mass Ave, the brick building, to be repurposed and revitalized. The project will propose to maintain the essential facade, scope, and scale of the existing building, and modify the building for reuse as eight residential townhomes with entrances from the rear of the building, adding a detached garage structure to provide a single garage and storage area for each townhome, and then enhance the site to provide parking, vehicle circulation, and common exterior living and green space for those residents. The design intent is to maintain the front elevation and facade in essentially its current form, with the exception of dual windowed front dormers, where there are currently single windowed front dormers, and that's for compliance with safety and health codes. And Gene, I think there's some, photos, images of that, if you have them.
If you wanna go through this, and then we'll show the site plan.
Yeah, that'd be fine. The eight units would range from 1,600 to 1,900 square feet of finished living space with a five or six-room, two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath floor plan program. The expected buyers would include empty nesters and young professionals. Both, both of those market segments are substantially underserved today in North Andover. Required approvals are expected to include, but not be limited to zoning for density, probably a side setback for one of the structures in the garage, planning to support zoning and for the separation of the lots and for site plan review, conservation for work within wetland buffer zones, building for demolition as well as reconstruction, as well as the typically related approvals from Public Works, fire, police, and the Health Department. Zoning would require either a zone change, as we had previously discussed, I think, in some, in some detail, or a definition change pursuant to appropriate town meeting articles to be drafted and filed. I've submitted one, one alternative draft for consideration. In terms of timing, if this were to go forward, the schedule would likely involve spring 2019 town meeting consent, with concurrent preliminary informal discussions with zoning, planning, and conservation regarding site and project specifics. Following a successful town meeting approval, definitive applications would be submitted to those same boards. Physical work would commence following receipt of permits, demolition of the annex and the necessary roof elements, remediation of hazardous materials and mold, preservation of the appropriate elements such as the tower, and then site, site alterations, and finally the reconstruction and finishing of eight townhomes. About a two-year project horizon is what I would expect that to entail. In summary, this proposed reuse gives priority consideration to preserving the exterior appearance of the building and the site, minimizing traffic impacts, minimizing noise and light pollution and visual impacts on neighbors, and providing needed housing to underserved markets. And that's, that's that, unless you have questions.
Go.
Gene, can you run through those? That's the site as it exists today, the 1.75 acres. That gives you a little bit of an idea of the terrain, of the vegetation, and the current existing conditions. That, if you can scroll back down a little bit, is a, a simple and initial concept plan that shows a detached garage building out in the back, shows the annex removed, shows division, if you will, of, of, of the individual units, and appropriate parking for all of that. If you can go to the next one, Gene.
So what would you be? Building. So, the, the printing museum, you're taking off the annex, but the building basically the same?
Building would have no envelope change, other than removal of the big box annex out the back, which was added, I don't know, sometime, I think in the seventies. It's just, it's a windowless box in the back.
Okay.
And if you, Gene, if you scroll back one to the, to the satellite photo, that large box in the back would be removed.
Okay.
Okay?
Is that where the parking is proposed?
Just, just a little bit of it, actually.
I just can imagine it's gonna be just lighting, isn't there residents behind there?
Yes, there is.
Yeah.
Yes, there is. Well, and again, you know, I don't wanna jump the gun on details that would be run through and, and, you know, in, in full review by a site plan review. You know, we've developed 196 homes here in town. Some of the projects were large. I mean, when, whenever it's appropriate or manageable or safe, dark skylighting is just a policy for me, and I think for most other people today.
There's a lot of activity, I mean, it's, it's a beautiful common, right? And then you're proposing something of a development that is existing, the neighborhoods behind there, and just the, the vegetation, not to mention the traffic, and just the outlook of that on the common just seems, you know, I think there'd be other proposals that could probably serve, that complement the common.
Well, again, I, I, I hear what you're saying. I think we're jumping ahead in, in, in the process. This has not been a private discussion, this building and its ultimate disposition or use or reuse. This dialogue has gone on for years. As I said in my opening remarks, I've been engaged in most of those discussions. Nobody, nobody has stepped up with an alternative that's acceptable to neighbors or the Historical Society or the community at large. Nobody's been, to put it bluntly, willing to put their money where their mouth is. Everybody talks about what they want, but nobody has taken the step of saying, "I'll do this." There may be better alternatives, there may be other alternatives, but if people just talk about them, that really doesn't get anything done.
And Tom, one of the questions was, what will you be building? Could you finish that part of the answer?
Yeah, the only thing that, the only thing that would be built, we'd be removing the annex, and we'd be building that eight-stall garage building out in the back, and that would be cut into the slope. It wouldn't be running up the hill, it would be basically on grade with the existing pavement.
Go back to the satellite, so we could just sort of guess how far the cut goes into the hill.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to see the hill there.
Well, you see where the pavement is.
Yep.
Essentially, that garage would start approximately at the edge of the pavement, 22 feet deep from there.
So basically, all of the garage is cut into the hill?
Correct.
Okay.
The pavement is approximately 22, 25 feet wide today?
No, 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 that pavement, that garage would start at the back of the pavement, approximately.
So, what is the width of the pavement off the building, would you say?
Oh, the pavement off the building is...
25 feet?
Thirty-five, thirty-five, forty feet, something in that, in that.
Thank you.
The, just, in terms of, for informational purposes, for the last six or eight weeks, we have flagged wetlands out there. It's been raining for two months, I think everybody knows that. The survey crew has been trying to get out there, Jack Sullivan, Sullivan Engineering does our survey and engineering work. He just got out there Saturday. Finally, he's months behind because of the last two months of weather. We wanted to have more detailed information in terms of topography, in terms of vegetation, specific, specific trees and those types of things. I just received a draft from him at about four o'clock this afternoon, so I didn't wanna bring it because I haven't even looked at it. And not a draft of a plan, a draft of existing conditions. But at a subsequent meeting, if this is gonna be discussed again, we'll have a lot more detail about the site specifics.
Any other graphics, Gene?
Those are sample floor plans of what would fit, could fit in those units. That's the building as it exists today.
On this view?
Yeah. This, this is a view of the building, obviously, earlier in the year when the, when the foliage was still, was still green. The individual window dormers there, you see, and if you scroll to the next, to the next view, that's a representation of what it would look like changing the single dormers to double dormers.
So no roofline changes?
No roofline changes. No facade changes other than that.
What's the proposed cost per unit? Like, you think, you said you're making it affordable, or there's a, a gap in being able for certain age demographics to, to live in this type of space?
I would expect these to be 600 plus or minus, maybe six and a quarter, or something like that. High fives to six and a quarter.
Gene, anything to add at this point?
I would expect we're gonna get into this proposal change.
Right, and so, the first two proposals were really specific for a lot or comprised of...
Why don't you tell us in general what you're proposing for the zoning change and, and why? Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
I would just add, the other two are map amendments.
Right.
For the zoning map, where this is a zoning bylaw amendment, it's actually changed to the text within the bylaw.
Right, so before, when this had come up for discussion, we had talked about changing the actual zone, underlying zoning, to a different zoning district.
Correct.
Which would allow for this. What you're suggesting is changing a current bylaw.
That's correct.
And your position is that that would then allow what your proposal, as well as similar potential proposals in other locations in town?
Right. I think there's more sensitivity to changing an individual site in a, in a, in any corridor and in, in any zone to a new zone. So I think that, that poses a lot of challenges that we hadn't necessarily thought through entirely on initial discussion. I think that's much more challenging. And we have a, you know, a bylaw, the large estate condominium conversion, I don't know if it's ever been used, actually. Gene, do you know if that, if that bylaw's ever...
Speculated it was intended for Kipian Hall at one time, which ended up being a 40B development, so I don't know that it was used there.
Yeah, I, I don't know of any use of that, of that bylaw since it's been put into place. So we looked, we looked at that bylaw because it, it applies to, to, to large, large homes it was intended, or large buildings, typically in residential areas that have, you know, lived beyond their, their usefulness as, as a large home. It was intended to offer conversion of large estate homes into condominiums. That, that, that was its goal.
Right, so these types of great estates, large estate bylaws are not unique to North Andover. They are in many different communities, and I agree with your assessment that the idea is that there are, especially in New England, a lot of older homes, a lot of grander homes that people no longer use as such homes, and that, that the idea is to, instead of just demolishing them and, and, and then subdividing, and to make, single families, to make some sort of more apartments, kinds of things like that.
Yeah, these are, these are buildings or homes that existed pre-zoning, were zoned into a narrow, a narrow use or a narrow district, if you will. And that's the same with this building. It wasn't a home, but it's a, you know, it's a large building on a smaller lot. And the large estates condominium conversion can only be applied currently to a site of 10 acres or more. And that's a, that's a large standard. There probably, or there may not be any such place in North Andover, and that's probably the reason why it hasn't been used yet. It's been sitting there idle. I mean, it was, it was, it was established with intent. So the approach was to shrink that requirement, so that it would apply to this if the, if the town wanted it to apply to other places that are more in-town, in our more urban areas, for some reason, then that could be considered too. But the, but the driver was this building and its lot size. And when I proposed a couple of changes to that text, those were targeted specifically to constrain the, the flexibility, so that it would apply, if not exclusively, or hopefully exclusively to this, to this project, so that there wouldn't be something else that, that was an unintended consequence of that, of that rewording.
But it is possible that this could...
Apply to something else?
Apply to a property somewhere else that had not been envisioned.
Absolutely. And, you know, Gene and I talked...
This approach is not site-specific.
That, that's correct.
Right.
That's correct. I mean, I tried to constrain it so that, so that it would be unique to, to this project. But in all honesty, I went to the assessors, tried to get a, a report of, with some parameters, with some, with some filters, and wasn't able to do that. Gene, I don't know, you and I both asked...
I thought of it today, actually.
Yeah, we asked quite a few weeks ago, and...
I just thought of it.
I don't know if they can filter things.
Yeah.
You know, we may have to look through, if it's, if it's significant, we may have to look through. The assessor's office thought that there would be no other applicable parcels, but they couldn't confirm that with the report. So we did, we didn't do this arbitrarily, Peter, we thought it through, we asked the question...
That's gonna be an important answer to have, to the best that we can, about where else this might affect.
So, the assessors don't capture gross floor area, but they, their property cards, I think it's called living area, and so we tried to just use living area where we can make an educated guess as to how many.
But there could be commercial places that were, say, before our, you know, in these districts, 'cause this just talks about existing buildings, not necessarily residential, 'cause otherwise your proposal wouldn't apply.
It's in residential 1, 2, and 3.
But it's only, it's only in our 1, 2, and 3, though.
Right, but what if there's a commercial building that predated zoning, so prior non-conforming?
99 Restaurant.
Right.
Right, so we would query, they have the residential zone on their cards, so we would...
Right.
...find parameters to query residential...
Right, right, I'm just saying that it could apply to, to the 99, right?
Well...
If that was big enough.
Right, but again, one of the, one of the things that, that, one of the reasons why I put in to that, to that, again, it was a, it was a draft, it was a, it was an idea.
We're just thinking this through.
One of the reasons why I put in the 10,000 square feet of gross floor area is because that's a pretty high standard.
Right.
This is a big building, and that's a pretty high standard to me, and certainly the 99 doesn't come close to that.
What's the square feet of the building?
It's, it's, depends on who, who's calculating. I mean, the assessors think it's much larger than it is, but...
Without the box in the back?
It would be just under 13,000 feet, 12,800, I think.
So, yeah, to the extent we can get any other ideas, that would definitely be helpful. I mean, it's a good, it's an interesting approach, and we can certainly, you know, take a look at that.
It strikes me that, you know, what, you know, if you try to weigh, it, it keeps the parcel under the same zoning category. So in some respects, that may reduce risk in the out-years.
Well, I, I think it does. I think it was an attempt to address that issue.
On the other side of the coin, there's a lot of questions about where might it apply elsewhere in unintended consequences, and, and I have a question for Gene, if I can. What, what are the consequences in terms of, or the implications of town meeting with this approach versus changing the zoning approach at town meeting?
It's the same process. You would require a public hearing, and it takes two-thirds vote at town meeting.
Both?
Both. A zoning map amendment versus a bylaw text amendment?
Okay.
Same process.
Both, the two-thirds vote?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And I will add, given that this equation involves gross floor area, in the past, we've had a number of different building commissioners that, if you were to read the definition in the bylaw, it's somewhat vague, so we defer to them to do their calculation. So as, if this were to go forward, I would recommend getting a firm definition of gross floor area. I've asked the building commissioner, I'll have him formalize it for the next meeting. But I think that definition would definitely need to be strengthened, so that it's always calculated the same. So oftentimes, if a basement is below grade, a building commissioner will count only at the grade level and higher, attic, dormers, things like that. Many bylaws have different definitions for gross floor areas.
And when Tom's done, would it be helpful for me to give just a very short summary of the working group for folks who are here tonight that may not have a chance, had a chance to attend or see any of the minutes, just a very short summary?
I think that would be great, and then we'll get into public comment.
And just, just the last comment to, to the dialogue. And just the last comment to the dialogue that you were having. You know, again, not knowing if they, if the assessor's office can produce, or are able to produce with the software that they have, a filtered report. We thought about the fact that we may have to go through those thousands of records in our 1, 2, and 3, and actually ferret through them, and see where, or if it may apply, and if it would need to be refined or tweaked, to make sure that it was either more constrained, or if this board decided they wanted it to apply to something else, try to include whatever else it was that you wanted to include.
Right.
It works both ways.
Right, there are places that may be appropriate for this type of, we may want to encourage this type of development.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
And what's the special permit process for if something qualifies for this type of, under this bylaw? What happens if it, say, qualifies?
It's...
Right, so it's a special permit?
It is a special permit by the planning board.
Okay.
So, I didn't bring the whole bylaw, but yes, planning board is a special permit granting authority for development. And it technically would trigger cycle and review anyways, just a new development, change of use, that affects circulation, traffic, so any of that.
So, I think going forward, that's a piece we want to kind of affirm, if, just so that we're sure of what the permitting process is.
Okay, so, Peter, do you want to talk about the working group a little bit?
Just very briefly, so, as the chairman noted, there was a working group established, I think it was late spring, it met three or four times over the summer and early fall. The minutes of that group are on the town website, I'd encourage you to look at those, because my summary will just be very brief. But some of the members of the group are here tonight in the audience, and others in the audience joined some of the meetings. But the group looked at properties in the old center area, got a tour of the print museum, and heard a little bit from the Historical Society about some of the early proposals for potential commercial use that were not specific. Raised concern about open-endedness, about what commercials use might be if the zoning was changed. At the last meeting, Historical Society said that they had been approached with a proposal that you just heard from Mr. Zarico. I think there was a sense that if there were to be a development of that structure, based on what Mr. Zarico had done in town, you know, had a very good reputation, and if there were a development, you know, a reputable person to do that. But at that last meeting, there were two other suggestions that came into discussion, particularly near the end of the meeting. One was to remove the building and leave it as open space. There were questions about how financing could be done, and there's been a suggestion submitted to the planning board, that's a matter of record, in an email that details potential financing. And then there was another suggestion about removing the building for the purpose of reserving space for some point in the future, where if there was an early-period house in town that would otherwise be lost, that this now empty parcel could be a place where an early-period house could be moved, and saved, and would fit ideally with the nature of the common. I think at the end of the meeting, there were observations from a number of participants that perhaps was a very strategic view, in terms of historic preservation of a potential early-period house, and of that setting on the common, and there were also questions about how that could be financed. I think that's sort of the summary, but I encourage you to look at the meetings, because that's a more detailed record, the minutes.
So, and we had a little bit of discussion about those two items at our last meeting, I think, the last or the one before, but as of right now, neither of those options is before us.
Correct.
The option before us is a suggested zoning change, so...
And I should also note that at the last meeting of that working group, it was specifically discussed and sort of reiterated, that that working group was not formed as a decision-making body. We were not ruling, we were not weighing in on any, it was simply information gathering, public forum.
Right.
And so, I think, you know, I say that because nothing came before that board, really, and right now, there's only one proposal before the planning board, and it's the one we just heard.
Right, and so, and that's what, and we're happy to hear about other ideas, thoughts on what should be done there, but we're mostly focused on what's before us, and what's being recommended, in terms of a zoning change, for good, for bad, for whether there's other options, and if there are other options, then I think whoever's in favor of those other options, and the owners of the property and developers should continue to discuss any potential options that there are, and we may, as individuals or as a board, favor certain options, but we're only going to deal with the ones that are in front of us. So, with that preface, let's jump into any public discourse that wants to be on the proposal that we have currently. None? Okay. Does anybody wish to get up and say anything? And we have read, anyone who submitted emails, we've read them, they're all part of the record, and we're definitely thinking about them. If, I think we'll probably raise some of those issues on our own at the next meeting, but if anyone wants to just come up and say anything, please do now.
I will ask if, at the next meeting, you do want to submit material, that you do it earlier than the weekend and the Monday. I know the agenda doesn't get posted till Thursday afternoon, so you're starting to see material and want to react to that, but if closer to Thursday and Friday, if you can submit material, it would be appreciated. It can't be piecemealed out to the board, and so, they need an opportunity to review it.
Yeah, and the best way to do that is, you can either, is to submit it to Gene directly, her email's on the town, you can submit it to any of us, we won't discuss it, you know, with you online, I'd really just forward it to Gene to include in the record. So, you have that? Okay? Anybody? No? Yes? No? Yeah? Come on?
I'll try to be more brief than my email to you.
Okay.
So, you can guess who I am, for those who don't know.
Why don't we wait till you get to the microphone, introduce yourself, give us your address?
I'm Brad Wakeman. I need to switch my glasses. I live at 140 Academy Road, and it surprises me to be here speaking in opposition to something proposed by the North Andover Historical Society and Tom Zarico. I have ties to the Historical Society, and I've long admired Tom's work. I've been active in land conservation for 25 years, more than 25 years, here in North Andover, on the shores of Buzzards Bay, and statewide as part of the trustees, and hence my conservation proposal in my email into the working group. As a conservationist, Tom Zarico is my favorite developer. Carter Field, off Bradford Street, near Barker Farm, has 15 houses on just 11 acres, and protects 140 acres. And Hickory Hill is a development nestled behind fields and woodlands, and protects 50 acres. And if you ever walked to the top of Carter Hill, you should thank Tom Zarico. That's 27 acres of field, it's just beautiful. And the Historical Society, too, has done much for North Andover. And while I've been puzzled and troubled by their recent actions, and they might be puzzled and troubled by mine, if we assess them over the arc of their existence, I think we all would conclude that we have benefited from their efforts. Just take a walk around Parson Barnet. And I would add that I was once on the Historical Society Board, a number of years ago, as a treasurer, a post my grandfather actually once held in the 1950s. But this isn't about Tom being a great developer, or the Historical Society being a worthy organization. For this meeting, this is about condos on the common, a plan that I believe is bad for the common, and bad for the old center. I live in the old center, and I don't hear people saying, gee, what the old center needs is a condominium development. What I do hear people saying is that there's too much traffic, especially for folks that drive through it during the commuting hours. Some may argue that this condominium development may fill a housing need. I think we have over 2,000 condominiums in North Andover. So, what need will these eight units fill, that one of the other 2,000 units can't fill? We've heard that the condominium conversion will be done in a tasteful way that maintains a familiar facade, and considers potential light pollution, and with Tom involved, I believe it will. But I don't worry about Tom. I worry about the owners 30, 50, or 100 years from now. Small condominium associations are sometimes filled with conflicts, pitting owner against owner, that ultimately put the fabric of the building at risk. And I think we need to ask ourselves, what will this condominium complex look like 100 years from now? I would suggest that particularly on the common, we need to think about future generations more than an immediate financial benefit for any one organization. And whatever promises that the condo complex, that may be made about the condo complex, may be hard to enforce. In 1992, as in high school, in 1992, the town of North Andover and the then new McDonald's Restaurant agreed that the restaurant building would have a roof of wood shakes, that the walls be of natural color red brick, and that the windows have an appearance of small colonial pane glass. That's in the Selectmen's Minutes. Well, it doesn't look like that today. So, who does want this? The board of the Historical Society. I don't know about its members, I'm not sure they've been informed, and I suspect a few others. But if we do this to help this Historical Society, should we do this for other property owners on the common? Maybe those that want to condoize their barn, or their houses? And I also wonder whether that 10,000 square feet, if it includes a barn, does that include the Kittred Farm? It's over 10,000 square feet, and has that acreage and frontage. Or should we maintain the existing zoning that has served us well? The historic landscape of the old center was built over decades by forward people thinking, taking a long view. It was built slowly, parcel by parcel, and those people were not thinking about a short-term gain, they were thinking 100 years ahead. Remarkable. Taking the long view is hard, we should all be grateful that they did. It is my sincere hope that the Historical Society will work with the community, its membership, and its neighbors, to find a different solution, one that we could all support, financially and otherwise. It's also my hope, I think to Tom's point, that this discussion can continue in a respectful and non-personal way. Did you have any questions about my very long email?
No.
Good.
I think, I, thank you, that was excellent. I thank you for presenting the information, and in a way we can understand, and in a way that was really persuasive. I appreciate that, thank you. But I, and I'll come to you in a second. The one thing I think is interesting is, and it's one thing that I've been thinking about, is you're right, we have eight units, what does that do for our housing needs? Because I do think we have housing needs, I really do. I mean, that's why we did a whole housing plan, that's why we have all part of the housing plan. I think we, if, in an ultimate project, one or two of these become affordable, I think that helps, because every affordable unit helps. But at the same time, if eight doesn't really do much for our housing needs, I'm also not sure how much it does in terms of traffic, right? We have eight units. So, but, that's something to be, I do want to see traffic information, we don't have that yet, so I do want to see that. So, I'm not sure how those weigh out. I really do think it's a really strong point to consider, is what is the effect of condos on the common? Is it something that sounds bad and really doesn't do anything? Is it something that really does detract from the atmosphere and the nature of the common? And I think that's what we're going to kind of struggle with, and I want to hear about it. It is a difficult question, and I'm not sure what the answer is. So, I think it's, the way you discuss it is really helpful for us in our consideration. And I do think that your point about what will this look like 50 years from now, is an important point, and I know at a previous meeting, we talked about, you know, I'm always in, I'm in favor of historical covenants, things like that, something running with the land, saying that you can't change the structure and shape of the building, without permissions from outside groups, things like that. So, I think there are ways to not necessarily answer all the questions, because you're right, you can't always foresee everything, but there are ways to mitigate some of those concerns. But the overall question of whether it's a good idea to have multi-unit housing directly on the common is a question. Maybe it is a benefit, maybe it's not. That's what we're here to discuss, and I think it's, I think the way you've raised it is really helpful for us in our discussion. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Peter, yes?
I just want to echo the chairman's comment, very helpful comments and presentation, as was Tom's, really terrific. But one of the points the chairman made, which I think is quite relevant here, is as persuasive and moving as the presentation is, that you made, there's nothing before the board.
Well, that can't come from me, right? I mean, that has to come from the Historical Society, they're the owners of the building. And so, if they wanted to pursue some option other than condominiums, or commercial, or something that the neighbors and its members may like, then that has to come from them, it can't, right?
So, I was actually going to ask someone to, at the extent of extending a meeting, that would be so nice to end early, I was going to ask someone to come up and kind of talk about some of these other options, where they stand.
Thank you.
Because, so, does someone want to come up, and then I'll pose a question?
Yes.
All right. And I know I'm risking everything here, we've been, this has been so nice, but I think...
You and me both.
It is, but it is a really fair point, because we're discussing a zoning change, a potential change, that would allow a particular project to potentially go forward with special permits and all of that. But alternatives are important, and so, to the extent that other alternatives were talked about by the working group, or have been raised in your own meetings, or have been considered and shot down, if you could tell us about what you've discussed, why you don't think it's feasible, what else is out there, that certainly, I, for me, it doesn't necessarily answer the question of whether this is a good idea, but what else is out there is certainly important to think about, so...
So, let me start out with the basics. Stan Limbert, 43, Stone Cleve Road, president of the North Andover Historical Society. I think people have touched on a process we've been going through, as a matter of fact, I would say it's me and Tom going through this process for, going on a year and a half, anyway, where we have really been searching for an appropriate way to do something good with 800 Mass Ave, the Rogers Building. And it has been a challenge. We've had a lot of, we've hit a lot of dead ends, and tried a lot of different things, and none of it has ever seemed to want to come together until we got Mr. Zarico's proposal for the condominiums. We had started with the idea that we, as you know, when we came before you, that we were going to try to find a business use for this building, and that was our original thought. And we imagined having a single leasur that would use the whole building for one purpose, and we, you know, would hope that it would be not retail, and a low impact, again, for the community. We also had a proposal that was, let's call it mixed use, right? It included retail, business, as well as residential. And in discussions that we had, both with you and with others, and as we started the working group, listening now to the community, as they participated in the working group discussions, it seemed clear to us that the business use, or particularly the retail use, was far less acceptable to residents around the common than other things we might have been thinking about. So, we finally started to move in the direction of thinking about residential, which had been recommended by several different people, you know, this is a residential area, how about something with residential? And so, we received Mr. Zarico's proposal, which seemed like a very appropriate to us use of the, reuse of the building, and met some of the criteria that we had set for ourselves for the building. Number one, first and foremost, was preservation, not only of the building itself, which was built to, as representative of, if you will, the history of North Andover. It was built to represent a mill. That structure was built with that design in mind, and it was trying to represent the heritage of our town. Secondly, it has been on the common as long, almost as long as the modern common has existed. There's been a common there for 100... There's been a common there for 150 years or longer, but the current common was finally turned over by the Improvement Society to the town in 1959. And that cornerstone was laid for that building in 1960. So it's been there almost as long as the modern common. And most, most all of the people that probably are, many of us sitting in this room have only known that building on the common, have only known the common with that building on it. So we've, we were looking for something that would preserve not only the building itself, but if you will, that landscape, that view on the common and what we felt it represented. And this seemed to us to be the best use we could come up with of all the things that were considered. Now, I have to say again that there is money involved in this proposition, you know, and we, we need and can always use more funding for our private organization to serve our town and provide the educational and preservation services that we hope everybody enjoys and appreciates from what we do. So--
What would you do with that money?
We, it would continue to expand our operations into other areas like making us more digital, putting more of the information we have online, providing more education in our schools. So all of that money could be used for those purposes if we were able to recognize it. Now, having said that, to Mr. Wakeman's point, if we were given an equivalent offer and someone wanted to buy the building from us and do whatever they want with it, tear it down, save the property for subsequent use for another structure that could be moved there, we're okay with that, too. That would be an acceptable alternative, too. We cannot afford to do that ourselves. We can't, you know, level the property and leave it sit there, waiting for something to show up to be put on that spot. So that's sort of the dilemma that we find ourselves in. And we've wanted to be very sensitive to the building, the site, the neighborhood, the common itself. You know, we're all about preservation, and we understand where we are and what the importance to our town, of our location.
So let me ask you a question, because for me personally, I'm more interested in what this project or zoning change means going forward. But there has been some discussion of previous opposition by the Historical Society of condominiums in the area.
Yes.
And I think that's a fair point. I mean, to me, it doesn't really rule the day one way or the other, because I don't want to think about what this project means. But I'd be interested in that juxtaposition of why it wasn't okay for other people to do condos, but you guys want to do condos here. So I think it's a fair point.
And so I would just briefly say that in 2006, when there was a proposal to turn one of the historic houses on Academy Road into condos, members in the audience, who were on the board at the time, actually, had a letter, sent a letter out where the Historical Society opposed that project. It was based primarily on the historic, the historic nature of that house and its setting, right? On Academy Road, probably the most historic section of a road in our town. And that house was truly a historic house. The print, the 800 Mass Ave, the Rogers Building, is not technically historic, right? It's not 100, it's not 100 years old or older, right?
But the reason, but one of the benefits that we're being told of this project is that we're keeping that particular building.
Yes.
So was that the case in the other, in the Academy Road one? Was that building going to be maintained or was that going to be torn down?
As far as I know, the building was going to be maintained and condoized.
It's going to be kept. So then, I guess, I guess that's my question, is if, I like the idea of reuse of an old building. I used to live in Everett in a schoolhouse that was built in 1919. Couldn't be a school anymore. They made it into condos. It still looks like a school on the outside. I think it's a good idea in principle of reusing older, bigger buildings and making them into multi-housing, just the idea in general. So I guess, what's the difference between the Academy Road one and this one? And I'm not saying that maybe the Academy, maybe you were wrong back then to oppose it. I don't know. But what's the difference?
Yeah, I, the difference, having, you know, looked at the documentation, is that was, the structure itself, the house itself, was clearly historic, right? As are many of the houses on Academy Road. And I think that was what generated at that time, of course, I wasn't involved, I wasn't on the board, I wasn't there to be part of any of those decisions, was that it was the house itself that was the driver. And maybe, maybe the possibility that, you know, people would do, as Mr. Wakeman said, and not put shingles and brick, you know, that do something to the structure and on a intended purpose. Now, what I would also say is that, what I've been told and what people have tried to educate me to understand is that in the intervening, you know, over a decade, we continue to improve our ability to provide preservation covenants and ways to make sure people hopefully do the right thing with the building. So we might have strengthened that capability between 2006 and now, and maybe people might think differently about even that decision if we had to look at it again today. I don't know. But I'm just saying, you know, there are some differences there that I think are useful to note.
It doesn't, it doesn't, you know, rule the day one way or the other, but I did think it was an important point.
No, I, I understand. I mean, it would need to be addressed at some point, so.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Just because I'm not sure if I'm misunderstanding, but Peter had asked Mr. Wakeman, why haven't you put something forward? And his response was he couldn't. It needed to come from the Historical Society.
Right.
If I understood correct, you said you'd be open to other alternatives if there was a revenue stream?
Yeah, right.
Right? And so wouldn't that application to the CPC come from the Historical Society in Brad's proposal? So he proposed open space with limited parking capabilities on that and do that through the CPC funding if it was to be--
Well, first, first, I'm not sure that we would ever, the Historical Society would ever want to put a parking lot there, any kind of parking on that site, no matter what. So I just don't think that's a, because we wouldn't want the responsibility of that. So that's not the business that we're in. If the town wanted to purchase the property and make that into some parking or something else, that would be a whole different thing. They could do whatever they want. We would probably never want to do that because of the liability and the responsibility of doing that. So that's sort of a non-starter. That would be a non-starter for us. But the difference here, of course, is the amount of money that would be involved and the amount we would get to offset whatever the loss of the structure would be, it would be considerably less than the proposal we already have. So that's one issue, right, for us.
On that, if you talk to the, I mean, I mean, again, just thinking out loud, but I mean, I know if an organization like the trustees or someone like that would want to get involved, you could talk with them about purchasing it and making, attracting open space.
I'll give you just my anecdotal answer to that question, then people who know more about this, concernedly, say more. My understanding is that the trustees require you to provide for them support along with your donation, like money, to maintain whatever it is you're giving them, which we don't clearly have. So, you know, we're not, we can't pay, you know, that's not, that's not the position that we're in. So the trustees might be not one of the alternatives for us. But, you know, there could be others. I'm not saying there aren't. Again, to the point Mr. Zarico made earlier, you know, at every meeting, early on, we kept, we've always asked, if somebody has an idea, if somebody has a use for this building that we can figure out how to implement, we're happy to have that discussion.
And you're still open to--
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. We're not, we're not closing anything off, but this currently--
This is real in front of you right now.
Absolutely. And to Mr. Boyd's point, we had presented, at the request of the working group, some alternatives for the building, right? A business use, a mixed use, and a residential-like use. And the working group said, that's too hard for us. We can't, we can't deal with that. That's too complicated. Pick one and come back and explain one to us. And so after we really thought about it and considered it carefully and thought about what we had heard from the residents in those meetings and their feedback, you know, Mr. Zarico's proposal was the one that came out of that. And that's how we got here, was that was the one that seemed to best satisfy the most needs. Now, it's not, it's never going to be the perfect answer for everyone. That's clear. But we felt that this was the best that we had received in terms of a proposal for this, for this building on this side.
Okay. Thank you.
So instead of just waiting, I'm sorry--
Go ahead.
--for proposals to come to you, does this Historical Society ever, like, go out to, not consultants, but other historical, you know, areas or societies and help kind of come up with ideas to preserve such a building? You know, instead of like waiting for a public to come to you, because isn't it's part of your scope or role to also do that? Because there's probably other buildings in town that are gonna--
Early on, so let me just tell you what we did early on. We looked for other possible uses for the building, right? For example, including other museums, right? Another museum in that building. Turns out, nobody, no museums nowadays have the, you know, they're all like us. They're not well-funded and they, you know, they don't have a lot of money and it's, you know, it's expensive to move. And so we never seemed to be able to identify any museum-type use for the building. We also looked at civic uses, like for example, a library annex or an expansion room for the youth center. They were all interested, but their ability to pay was pretty minimal, right? So we tried to look for alternative uses and were just not able to get anywhere. That, plus the fact that the building needs quite a bit of refurbishment before it could be used for any purpose, as you sort of heard implied by Mr. Zarico and what would be required to, for him to do, to execute his proposal. So that was yet another limitation for us that kept the prospects to a very narrow range.
Is it because of money that it hasn't been preserved?
Well, it's a long and complicated process that we got to where we are today. And over a long period of time, and again, I'll, I'm going to use the, I'm the new guy here card, you know, other boards of the Historical Society tried to work with the tenant at the time to, you know, maintain the building and do all the right sort of stuff. And that seemed to be unsuccessful over time. And then when they left, we were left with a building that needed far more work than was easy for, it was not, we were not able to pay to bring the building back up to its, the necessary level. That, plus the fact that all the infrastructure in that building itself dates from its original construction. So it was all, in any case, have to be redone, you know, heating, ventilating, air conditioning, all of that sort of stuff would have to be redone. It's all very antiquated and would have to be all removed and replaced anyway. So there are just a number of reasons why it's a complicated issue. And even, you know, having said all of that, so there's been the suggestion, and, you know, various people have made the suggestion, well, just tear it down, right? Even that's an expensive proposition, because that is probably the most well-constructed building, other than our mills in North Andover. It's constructed as though it were a mill. It was built with the specific intent to be able to put looms and weaving machinery on the first floor of that building, which weighed many tons. So it's a very, very robust building, and it would take a lot of money and a lot of time to tear that building down. So there are a number of issues here, which all, for us, make it very difficult for us to make easy decisions about what the right answer is, so.
Maybe the mill developers would have had some suggestions.
Maybe.
They did a beautiful job.
Yeah, they did. They did, so.
Yeah, just, I really appreciate your comments, as would the others. You know, I thought that your discussion contrasting the Historical Society's position on condo development of a historic house on Academy Road versus the Historical Society's position on condo development at 800 Mass Ave was very instructive. Different people on the board at those times, but still the Historical Society coming to sort of the mission, which is preservation.
Correct.
And I think I heard you say that with respect to the proposal before the board, kind of two motivators, if I understood correctly. One was the money, and the other was, your business is preservation. But when you were describing the contrast between the Academy Road condo and 800 Mass Ave condos, it just made me wonder if, once that building is no longer used for the purpose, which was the history of North Andover, the mills--
Right, right.
--is there preservation in a structure that is not inherently historic? If it's, well, I mean, you were saying that 800 is not inherently historic, like the Academy Road house was, right?
Correct. Technically, not technically historic.
But once it's no longer used for the purpose that it was built, which was history of the town, is there really a preservation mission if what you're preserving is condos?
Oh, yeah.
And in other words, is the preservation mission at that point preserving the common?
Yes.
Instead of the building?
Okay, so let me give you an example that I think sort of addresses a similar thing. The Brick Store. Okay? The Brick Store is a historic building, clearly a historic building, 1830, in the old--
It has to be historic, because I was buying five cent candy when I was a kid there, so. We all know how long ago that was.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, well, even longer than that. And that building, I think, meets the, is, takes, has taken a similar path in its existence to sort of what we're suggesting here. So if you look at the exterior of the building, you can find that, that view in pictures going back to the beginning, 100, you know, 150 years or more, right? You can see that picture of that building sitting in that site. But if you look at the interior of that building, it looks nothing like what it looked like in 1830, right? It's completely renovated, completely brand-new, and being used very effectively by tenants for doing what they do, their mission. So does it help preserve the look of the old center? Absolutely. I think that's very important, and that's a very, that in and of itself is an extremely, not only historic but iconic building in our old center. But it doesn't mean that that building hasn't, in its own way, been repurposed to serve new people in new ways and sort of make that balance between that historic view and a building that has some use to it. So that's all I would say about that.
I think the term iconic is, that, because when I think of going down to the common, I do think of this building and the outside of the building, and this is the inside. So I do think, although the 800 Mass Ave is not historic, it's iconic.
That's what I would say about it. Yes.
So I think of it that way. And the question is, that we have to grapple with, is if we change the interior and change the use of this, and then if there are any effects of, if we went with this route of this type of zoning change affects elsewhere in town, how does that affect the feel of the common? And then that's what I think we have to think about.
Yeah, I understand.
And that's what these emails have been about. And that's what I think the, I think that's what the question is.
Well--
Because, because, I mean, we haven't got the traffic information. I don't think it's going to be high. The information about schools, it's not going to be high.
No.
The impact on housing, not going to be high. It's about the feel and the precedent. I mean, those are the things we have to think about.
We already have in the, not on the common, but in the old center, we already have multifamily buildings with parking that have been there a long time, right? We have multifamily houses, you know, a four-family, several two-family houses with parking, and that does not seem to have had a significant impact on traffic or whatever. I mean, we have that going on. So we have there rental units that are more than the number of condos that are being suggested here. And there has not seemed to have been a problem with that, you know, in all the years that that's been going on. So, you know, that is an example of, you know, what we might expect, and it doesn't seem to be. I mean, I drive by there all the time, and I've never noticed a traffic problem-- I mean, I drive by there all the time, and I've never noticed a traffic problem from behind any of those, in front of or behind any of those properties. So that, to me, would be an example of, of what we might expect, just saying.
Just, just a couple of quick, minor things. The, I, too, am open, by the way, to discussion, just so that you know that. I mean, but I think other discussions, if, if they occur, should run parallel. Again, this proposal that I put forward was born out of a need for somebody to take action, somebody to do something. We've been talking about it, and to Brad, to Brad's point, you know, it doesn't have to come from the society. I mean, a proposal can, like mine, went to them. I proactively said, I'll do this. It's the best thing I can think of. It's what I'm capable of, it's what I do every day. Somebody can put together a proposal with specifics and with commitment, but that's what it takes, is somebody doing something specific and with commitment. But I think that, I think everybody probably agrees that something should happen, something should be done, that building shouldn't sit there and deteriorate. This is a way to address that. Taking this action and moving forward with this zoning revision to the large estate conversion by law doesn't mean it has to be applied here. That's for another day. It opens up the discussion for an application to consider that if all of those other things are fairly addressed, properly addressed, and if there's no other alternative. That's, again, just wanted to make those comments.
I think your point is well-taken, that it should be done in parallel. And, and even if it's something, and speaking, just to stand and, even if it's something that you don't think would work out, or you've discussed, taking, like, Mr. Wakeman's idea was well-thought-out, well-presented, to the extent that you can look at it and investigate it, and if it's something that, that is possible down the line, great. If it's something that's not possible, that's also important, or why it's not possible, those are things that are important to hear, too. Because if, it's great to have an idea like, like, like his about open spaces, but if you come and tell us why it can happen, or when it could happen, or what it would cost, or why it can't happen, that's all helpful information in reviewing this, because if it's something that could happen in five years, well, maybe that's not great. If it's something that could happen in two years, maybe it's something to consider. If it's something that just you don't think could happen, well, then that's helpful for us to know moving forward, because it does weigh on the proposals that were, that is in front of us. But I don't think we should stop with the proposal. We should deal with what's in front of us, and anything else, it's helpful to know if you can consider it or not consider it.
So, okay. Anybody else for tonight?
One more thing.
Good, come on up.
So my name is Kim Pickle, and my husband and I live on 135 Academy Road.
Okay.
So we're kind of directly behind, and spoke to Mr. Zurico last time at the meeting. And I think our concern is not that you take a building and try to preserve it or hold it, but we're having a hard time with, Academy Road was a street that we purchased our home on, because it's the premier street in town, and it's gorgeous, and it has all these wonderful homes. To put a garage in there that will then be right on the, you know, part of Academy Road when you come up to the left. Now, having said that, a lot of trees have tumbled in that little area of space, but our, our family, our pool, our home is right there on that line. That, to me, changes the topography of what you're trying to preserve as, as open space, Brad, those points of making that and keeping that. That is a new structure that's added in that gives eight parking spaces for the occupants of that condo. And to me, that in and of itself changes, we're not just taking the building and rebuilding it, we're, we're adding a structure that's going to go right up to the top of the line, right on Academy Road, by the church, near our property, across from Brad and Wendy. I, I think that piece of property will then look funny, to me, to us.
Two things on that. One, I asked a question because I shared that concern.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it is a little bit different. That's something that's outside of the scope of the current building, which is kind of what we're talking about. So I share your thought and concern. But the second part is, that is more for a, if there was a zoning change, and they came a special permit and site plan about whether or not that garage would be appropriate, because that's not part of the zoning, right?
Okay.
The zoning is just about whether this use would be allowed. So really, it's about the dwellings and the townhouses themselves, and this is kind of a conceptual about what we're, what he's talking about, but if zoning changed, it wouldn't necessarily allow this. And I can say we, at least I, share your thoughts and concerns about that, that aspect, and that would have to be kind of figured out later on.
Yeah, okay. Just from the?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, last word?
Okay. I don't feel the need to have the last word. I, I agree that Academy Road is probably the most beautiful road in town. There's no question. And I've built some nice ones myself, but they don't compare, and I know that. So, but I think the special permit process, as you mentioned, is really the, the key to control of what gets done in this, in this environment. If that were a single-family home, somebody could put a garage, or a pool, or a tennis court, or anything, there'd be no real discussion about it. That's one of the challenges. The special permit process gives this board, if not other boards, and the public input the opportunity to direct or input and corral those things. And it's a discretionary permit from this board. It doesn't have to be given. I just wanted to make that comment, because as a single, as, as an R3, single-family lot, there's very little constraint on that. And, and, I mean, I can live with constraints. I'd like to see the right thing done. But I just wanted to make that point clear. That's it, done.
Okay, so we'll keep this on the agenda for two weeks from now, and thank you, everyone, for coming in. So can we get, quickly, can we get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 13th?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.